Greetings, greetings and welcome everyone to tonight's city council meeting. Time is now six o'clock. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino?
Here.
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Persart?
Here.
Mayor Protem Pimental?
Here.
And Mr. Boiles is not here this evening.
Very well, to start tonight, we will have an invocation from Pastor Tannehill of the Bridge Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Tannehill?
Let's pray. Father, I just thank you, Lord, for our first responders, Lord, our police, our fire, Lord, everyone that keeps this community safe, Lord. You're amazing how you continue to keep this community safe, Lord. I pray your blessing upon this council that they would rule as you would have them rule and just your will and your purpose be accomplished here, Lord. You are such a good, good Father. And Father, we just thank you for what you're doing. We ask your blessing over the council and over their families in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Tannehill. All right, we will start tonight. We have a special presentation for the 2023 Holiday Parade winners. Marsha Hanson, are you here? All right, the chamber will present Lily Craig, Special Assistant to Marsha.
Yes. Smart aleck. So, good evening, Mayor Protem Pimental and council members. My name is Lily Craig and I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, which trust me, that's weird to say after forty-two years. But first, we would like to thank the City of El Segundo for the partnership in making the El Segundo Holiday Parade possible for now fifty-nine years. You, along with incredible sponsors, bring smiles to thousands of El Segundo and South Bay residents each year, and we're very, very grateful. So now we're going to go on to the awards. We're going to kick off the awards by the Best Performers Adult Category Award, and that goes to the Dickens Christmas Carolers.
At the bottom of the sixth, the winner is in doubt. Will he get a hit or will it be an out? Curve or fastball swing, a homerun's all we need. They pitched him to an open stance and crack, we took the lead. Single hits, double plays, homers all the way. Oh, how grand it is to bring the trophy home today. Single hits, double plays, homers all the way. Oh, how grand it is to bring the trophy home today. Yay!
Can we get everybody in here? Okay, let's see, we get everybody in here. One, two, three, a little bit more, one, two, there. You guys stay patient with us for a sec. I want to try to get over this podium. Yeah. Okay. Okay, guys. One, two, and a couple more. Thank you so much.
Yes, we're going to ask you to stay up here for the rest. Okay. It's a great job. Okay, our next award goes to Best Use of Theme for Children, and that award goes to El Segundo Co-op Nursery School.
Uh-oh, let's see. Let's see if we can do this. Oh, I love the sailor. I love those sailors, so cute. Let me try and get everybody here. Okay, guys, so, one, two, and... Is there any, any chance we could stand up and hold the children? Oh, that was good. How about, how about this guy? How about these? How about, how about the fellow in the middle here? Well, if we can, if we can, if we can. All right, it was hard for me to see them. There you go, now you're showing off your muscles. There we go. All right, here we go. One, two, and, all right, I think this will be a lot nicer. Thank you so much.
Okay, the... That's okay. The next is also Best of Theme, but this is for Community Civic, and that award goes to New City Church. All right, so we're going to move on to the Best Holiday Spirit for Children Award, and that goes to the El Segundo Girl Scouts.
All right, all right, let's see. See everybody? Okay, sure do. All right, Girl Scouts. Nice smile. Here we go. One, two, and a couple more. Thank you so much, Girl Scouts.
Okay, followed by Best Holiday Spirit Business Commercial, and that goes to Edco Disposal.
Hey, how are you?
All right, there we go. Okay, we can flip that actually, will the gentleman? Very good. There we go, a couple, a couple, yeah, you want to hold him? One more here. All right, thank you.
Next on the list is for Best Performers Children, and that goes to the Kelly School of Traditional Irish Dance.
Wow, look at you, look at you. All right, perfect. You guys know how to line up. Just right. What about your sister? She doesn't want to come up? Okay. Very good. Okay, here we go, Irish dancers. Couple more. All right, thank you so much.
Okay, the next award goes to the Best Musical Band High School, and the award goes to El Segundo High School Eagle Pride Marching Band and Color.
Gets the honor, all right. Okay, here we go. Couple photos here. And a couple more, and one more. Thank you so much.
Okay, followed by Best Holiday Spirit Community Civic Award to Moose Lodge seventeen eighty.
Yeah, right, just center, come on, come on, get in the middle there. All right, here we go. One, two, and a couple more. And one more. Thank you so much.
The next award goes to Best Use of Theme Business or Commercial, and that goes to El Segundo Brewing Company. They're making, they're making beer or accepting the award on their behalf. Got it. Okay. The next award goes to the Best Holiday Spirit and Santa's Choice Business or Commercial, and that goes to one eight hundred Got Junk and Has Away Today.
The boss is in here. Where's Drew?
Where's the camera? We couldn't get it right here.
All right. Wait, there you go. I wanted to see Carol also. Here we go. Here we go, that, one, two, and, and one more. Thank you so much.
So we saved, I'm sorry. Okay. So we saved the, the most prestigious award for the last, for the suspense. Not like they don't know that they got it, but still, it's kind of cool. And so now for the Grand Marshals Award, which is chosen by judges as their favorite. The twenty twenty-three El Segundo Holiday Parade Grand Marshall Award winner created a float for our guests in honor and carried our grand marshals in style. This year's recipient is El Segundo Rotary Club.
Hey, Ed, how you doing? Here we go. One, two, and a couple more. One more. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll see you next year on December eighth of the Sixtieth Annual Holiday Parade.
All right, thank you, Marsha and Lily. Now we will move on to Public Communications. For Public Communications, if anyone is here, we've, we've got item four of the public hearings separated out on Public Communications?
Yes.
All right, we'll have two minutes per speaker on Public Communications because I think we have, how many? Twelve? Fifteen?
Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen?
Fifteen. I counted fifteen, but I may have gotten one more. Yeah, fifteen. Go with fifteen.
No, the fifteen is just for public comment for open.
That's just public comment.
That's not for the public hearing. So we will do, we have fifteen, that's thirty minutes for public comments, so two minutes per speaker of public comment. Over to you, Madam Clerk.
All righty, first up, Ken Wagaman.
How you doing? My name is Ken Wagaman, aggregate for seventeen Washington Street. And pretty much, you'll find that most of us are here due to the fact that, you know, we've been denied the parking permits for our street, and parking on our street is horrendous, daily. You know, you can't, if you move, you're not going to come back and find a place to park your car. So you basically have to protect your parking space in order to be able to even find a place to park your car when you come back. You know, friends can't come by because there's no place to park. You know, I got a friend sitting there in that, you know, got a ticket around the corner because he parked around the corner, and parking on that day was street sweeping. So, I mean, it getting a little ridiculous, and then I understand that you were able to give permits to Illinois and Indiana, but not to California, not to Kansas and Washington Street.
Thank you, Mr. Wagaman.
Jim D. Cordova.
Hello, Jim D. Cordova, four twenty-one Washington Street. I've been a forty-year resident of El Segundo, and I too am here to talk, mention, and explain to you a little bit about our situation on Washington Street that I don't think that you're aware of, and it's, the major part of our problem is two things. There are businesses in close proximity to Washington Street that do not have apparently enough parking for their employees. So their parking are street up every day. Then you have airport parkers who will come, park their car on a Monday or a Tuesday, and conveniently come back at like two AM on the following Thursday so they don't get a ticket. And then you have, what I'm told is, the Zone Three where Washington Street was originally recommended to be in Zone Three by the city engineer, and for some reason it was taken off. And the problem with that is that if you permit people, Indiana, and I forget the other street over, Illinois, all those parks, all the people who can no longer park there, where are they going to go? They're going to the next street over to Washington Street. So even though it's not on the agenda today, that's, I'd like you to keep it in the forefront of your thoughts, amongst other things, I'm sure, and when it comes up again, or if it can come up again, I really think we need to include it in Zone Three to really help solve our problem. And don't forget, there's a development going on in close proximity to Washington Street that a lot of people are very unhappy with, and one of the big fears is, again, parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. Cordova.
Heather Sutherland.
I didn't expect to be so fast, okay. Let's see, I prepared something. Good evening, Mayor Protem and members of the city council. My name is Heather Sutherland, and I'm also the current council PTA president. I'm here to extend a personal invitation to you and, to you to come to our honorary service awards and Founder's Day Tea event. As you know, this event happens every year to recognize the amazing contributions by our volunteers, teachers, administrators, and community of El Segundo schools. I give, I literally do meetings all the time, and I'm shaking right now. Okay. We are so fortunate to have such a giving community. This year, we are grateful to honor the efforts of the El Segundo Fire Department and the El Segundo Police Department. As you may know, these two departments have worked very closely with the El Segundo High School to provide workshops for students and parents. This year, El Segundo Fire Department provided a CPR training to parents and students. I am delighted to report that over half of the forty-four attendees were students. We think it's exciting to have the opportunity to educate the next generation on these important life-saving skills. Because of the overwhelming success, we are already in the planning stages for the fall CPR class on campus. To further exemplify our partnership with the city, the El Segundo Police Department and the El Segundo High School PTSA will be providing a women's safety course on April twentieth for our high school students, and our school resource officers will be providing two presentations to our parents and students on being a new driver and prom safety. Excuse me. All of this on top of the ongoing support that our schools and students receive in keeping them safe. I hope that you are able to come join us as we celebrate the contributions of the Fire and Police Department of our educational community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. What's the date on the tee, please? The date on the tee, please?
It is March fourth at four thirty PM.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Cheryl Smith.
Hello, good evening, city council. I'm here to thank you for recognizing that there, my name is Cheryl Smith, I live on four one six Kansas Street. I'm here to thank you for recognizing that there is a parking situation on the southeast corner of El Segundo. I'm thrilled by your directives to the city team to launch a twenty-four hour parking permit. This is exactly what the residents in this area have been asking for, for several years. However, I was really surprised that this was only enacted for Illinois and Indiana streets. As you've already acknowledged, there is a parking challenge on Holly in California as there's a parking permit that's already in place there. But the, but the decision at the last city council meeting to, in essence, squish Washington and Kansas streets between these two parking permitted areas is a little confusing. As evidenced by the slides from last, at the last meeting, Kansas and Washington are impacted, especially during peak times, and by implementing a solution for one part of the quadrant means that there will be a rolling impact onto the other surrounding streets. I would like to ask if you would please agendize the parking permit for the next city council meeting to create a twenty-four hour parking district to include Indiana, Illinois, Washington, Kansas, California, Holly, and Pine Streets between East Grand Avenue and Mariposa. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Lisa Mamoni? Mamoni? So sorry.
Hello, my name is Lisa Mamoni. I've lived in El Segundo at four three five Washington Street for twenty-three years, and we have a parking problem, as you heard, and I just would like to echo what everyone said. There are airport parkers, there are business parkers, and it's very difficult to park in front of your own house. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mamoni.
Pat Curry?
Hello, council. My name is Pat Curry. I live at four twelve Washington, fifty-six year resident, lived at this address at twenty-five years. About six years ago, became noticeable that we were having problems with parking, trash on our street, beer cans, urine bottles, condoms, vehicles have been broken into. It's a problem. We couldn't have no parking for our guests, our gardeners, pool guys, just no place to park. We filed for petition four times our street in the last five years. This is copied, so four times in five years, we've been ignored. Nothing's happening. We get airport parkers, we can get vehicles that sit for days, we have them towed, but they're smart, they know they got to move within seventy-two hours. Jim and Jack by eight AM, got eight employees minimum parked in front of our house. By nine AM, all the biz house, corporate towers, we have strep studios, they all start parking, they all ride skateboards, they'll ride, they don't care how far they drive, these kids. They all ride skateboards, they'll ride, they don't care how far they drive, these kids. They'll, they'll, they'll move to, you know, Center Street if they have to. Tonight, I'm respectfully asking you to reconsider adding us to Zone 3 parking, as suggested by your engineer and your staff. Okay? And hopefully reconsider this. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I'd say typically, guys, we don't applaud during public comment, just to keep things moving. So even...
Jason Tabak.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jason Tabak. I live at 424 Washington Street. We've been there since '09. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the, the city parking plan that, for the residents that you put in place at the last meeting for, for Indiana Pine and Illinois on the east side of Freedom Park. I think, I watched the video of that, of that meeting, and there was a discussion amongst council members about that, you know, your thoughts that it would just push that problem further into the city. So I ask that you, you know, that you amend that to include Washington Street and Kansas, and to follow your engineer's, you know, original recommendations. I know that the city spent a lot of time and money on the consultants to come in and, you know, and take a look at what's happening. And the city, you know, employees who thoughtfully kind of thought through some resolutions for it. So please, to amend, you know, what you put in place at your last meeting to include Washington and, you know, everyone on, in the red zone from the, the city engineer recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tabak.
Kathy May.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kathy May, I know most of you. Business owner for 30 years, we've lived in town for 30 years, we're at 409 Washington. I just want to stand here with my neighbors and say that we have a terrible parking problem today. Two gentlemen, thank you, thank you, two gentlemen actually approached me because my neighbor took a picture of them doing work in front of my house. So Jim and Jack's, there's a guy at Jim and Jack's doing work on his car in front of my house. The enterprise people were nice enough to leave a car in front of my house today after, I think, my husband left, he left 10 minutes, he couldn't find parking space, we have to stack our cars, three in the driveway. We're actually afraid to leave the house, if all three of us leave the house and nobody can park in one of the parking spots in front of our house, we don't have parking. So we have a really bad parking problem on our street. You know, I, most of you know me, I'm not one to complain, but I just want to stand here with my neighbors and let you guys know it's a really big problem on, on Washington. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. May.
Michael May.
Same thing she said.
Thank you, Mike.
I believe this, Nathan Brown.
Hi, Nathan Brown, 400 Washington Street. I'll keep it short. Everything everybody said already. It's, it's just, it's a nuisance, like, I'll take my kids to school in the morning, and by the time, I mean, they're in Center Street, it takes me two minutes to drop them off, the parking spot's gone by the time I get back. Trash cans, sometimes there's no, I can't put them on my curb, so I have to put them in front of my driveway. Pat, you put up a great point with the trash, it's just filthy. Jim and Jack's people, they park their cars, they just dump their trash out. And I live right next to door, next door to Jim and Jack's. So like, my house is the first one to get it. Yeah, there's never any parking. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Jim Woods.
Thank you, council members. My name is Jim Woods. I work for Gray Star, which is a real estate company partnered with Griffin Capital on the proposed development north of Grand at Holly and Washington. And so I'm just here to, to state, two statements quickly. One is to support these neighbors, there is a parking problem, and a 24-hour parking district, I think, is an important part of the solution to that. And second, to state for the record that the proposed development at our site can be excluded from that proposed parking permit, such that we don't want to make any problems worse. So any residents that come to our proposed project would not be benefits of that permit. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Carmen Curry. I live on Washington, 412 Washington, exactly. I am a little upset, so forgive me if I stop or pause. We've submitted petitions for help. You have not responded. Yes, last meeting, you pulled this off. We were so close. And instead, you just took us off. Thank you. Because now we want, we need 24/7 all the way to California. Because we're the red zone, and you need to make it the green zone again. That's what El Segundo is. It's the green zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Steve Voberl, I know how you say that name, because my daughter had, he's like...
Hello, City Council, Mayor Potam, how's it going? Again, I live at 408, Steve Voberl, I work, I work, I live at 408 Washington Street, I work there too sometimes. And again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skew a little bit differently. It's, part of the issue is also, the, it is the, what do you want to call it, I'll call it a transient population as well, that tends to park their vans. And then they have, like Pat was saying, there'll be condoms and beer cans and food and whatever, just laying on the ground. And I have a 12-year-old daughter who has to walk those streets, you know? And I know some of the other members on the council also have daughters. And it's a little discomforting to think that there's these vans parked there for days on end. I've told her at, before, before the site was deconstructed, I actually told my daughter not to walk down that alley, because there were so many homeless transients being in and out of that spot. I wasn't sure if somebody, all somebody had to do was just grab her, pull her in. So I think that the parking is just now the secondary part of correcting the issues that have been going on in that neck of the woods, in our neck of the woods. And it would be very, we'd be very grateful to have the 24-hours, 24-hour parking. There's times when I come home and I literally have to park in my own, in front of my own driveway, because I can't park in my driveway, because I have a wife and she had a friend over, and so when I get there and there's so many cars, and the Jim and Jack's guys are there, they're very nice to me, I mean, I wave to them, I say hi, but as I'm driving away from work, they're pulling up. You know, and I leave at 6:40 in the morning to go to work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Voberl.
Chris King.
How you guys doing? Thank you for hearing us out. My name is Chris King, I live at 413 Washington Street. I have two daughters, four cars in our household, which is a special joy that we contend with. Both of my daughters have been made to feel unsafe, walking to their cars in the morning, there'll be people in the cars, just wa, you know, guys, workers, whatever, just watching them, you know, walk to their cars. As a result, I no longer park in the driveway, I make sure that they do, but then that leaves me without a place to park. In today's hybrid working schedule, I will very frequently work from home, go out to client meetings, hustle back for a video conference call. This past Monday, immediately after the Super Bowl, I had a meeting, a client meeting at 9:00 in Playa Vista. Once that was concluded, I had to hustle home for another video chat. There was no parking. I parked on Holly, rolled the dice, because it was a Monday, there was nothing else I could do, there was no other place to go. I parked the car, I went in, I did my call, I came back out, boom, there's a nice parking ticket for me. So, you know, which is a, which is a nice little cherry on top of, of the annoyance of having no parking on our own street. So it was, it was upsetting to hear that we were so close, and I know my, my neighbors have been doing such an amazing job for the past five years of trying to get this problem helped and solved, and it seemed like we were right there. And then to have it taken away was an especially difficult thing to hear. So we appreciate you guys hearing us out. It is a very significant problem on our street, and we would love it to be addressed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Last but not least, Christian Bravo.
Hello, my name is Christian Bravo, and I live in Washington Street, 400 block, 416. So I moved to El Segundo about 10 years ago, and one of the very big appeals was the safety aspect of El Segundo, right? So it was very surprising that, as soon as we moved into Washington, that when my kids were walking through the schools, now keep in mind, it's just a couple blocks away, right? It was, we would tell our kids not to go through this, this trip between Washington and Kansas on Holly, just because of the different cars, that we just didn't know what was going on there. They have to walk a different way, because we just didn't feel safe for, for our kids. And, and now, when, for example, we walk at night, when, with my wife, you know, we try to avoid those areas, like around the park where there is cars and there is people, we seen people sitting in the streets as we walk by, right, on the, on the sidewalk. And we have to walk in the middle of the street just to feel a little safe. I just don't really want to make, you know, when we walk together at night, we want to feel like, that feeling that actually made us move to El Segundo, and the same type of safety that the pastor mentioned in, at the beginning of this, of this meeting, right? And, and parking might not make, might not make everything safe, right, but it will definitely make it better, right? It will definitely get us there, or at least, it will help, right? So the 24-hour parking in that area is definitely going to help. So here you are, you are the ones who are supposed to be providing, you know, some of that safety for us. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bravo.
That concludes the cards.
City manager comments.
Yes, Mayor, at this point, with the comments pertaining to the permit parking, I guess I would just say, what is the will of the council at this point in terms of, as you know, you discussed this matter at the last council meeting, would you like us to bring this item back for further discussion, or?
I think there's a few items, one of which is a code enforcement item, right? We have, if we have businesses that are continuing to pork outside of that, clearly we resolved one with a rental car company earlier, but I think we need to know if that is a determining factor. And then I think that it's probably worth agendizing in the future, relooking to see what the impact of the Illinois and Indiana parking district is doing, or parking zone, excuse me, is doing to Washington and the surrounding areas. I mean, obviously, Washington, Kansas are hand and glove on this, but that's my opinion. And it's not an agendized item for us to deliberate, but if we can provide some guidance, if you'd like a report.
Sorry, I do think there's a couple of things. I think Jim and Jack's was mentioned five times. So that's been a consistent problem, that, not only at this meeting, I think it's been mentioned before. So I think if we're going to agendize it, we need to start looking at that. And also, just to kind of recap our conversation from two weeks ago, we did have a feeling this was going to end up being the case, where you, you take a look at it and say, okay, what do we have to address next? So I do agree that I think it should be agendized for discussion, but we do have to look at this code enforcement piece too, and go from there. But it's definitely, if you have 15 people come in here, you have a problem. So let's at least agendize and discuss it again.
I might concur, concur. And then as far as the code enforcement, one of the things we talked about is, you know, looking at our, our current staffing to increase that code enforcement. So if you could bring that onto the agenda as well.
Yes, will do.
Because it wasn't just for that area, but it was all over town, especially down Main Street and Richmond Street.
Okay. Yeah, so the parking was a pilot program. I'm happy people came to talk, because that's how we get feedback, and we can make adjustments as we need to. Separate and apart, if you feel unsafe, if there are people in your neighborhood that you are afraid of, please do not hesitate to contact your police department. They are trained to deal with those types of situations. And I am concurrence that we need to flesh out this parking issue a little bit further. Has it been initiated? Did we start the 24-hour yet?
Good evening. The program has been initiated, we are in process of fabricating designs, but they haven't been installed yet. So we were targeting May to initiate that pilot project.
So we haven't seen the effects yet of anything besides two-hour enforcement? Or are we seeing effects of two-hour enforcement? Because I saw tires being chalked the other day.
Yeah, I, we have not installed the, we have not installed the signs yet.
Yeah, you don't even, you, we don't even have the permit set up yet, so that's...
Yeah, we haven't set up the permit yet.
Let me recommend this, when we have our one-on-ones with you this week, different, we can figure out what the timeline is to revisit this, because I think if we, and I know this is not an agendized item, but I would posit that if we start addressing this before we've seen what happens when we put in the parking district, I mean, we don't know what that is going to do to disincentivize the area. We could put this on and have it for, for conceivably, second meeting in March, but I think it's worth us, we can't have, we can't just deliberate it now, but we could deliberate it with you in the coming week. Thank you, Liz. Anything else? We individually can provide input that you cannot, in a serial manner, provide to another council member. To be clear, city attorney, city clerk, we can provide our own individual input to you for your consideration. Okay. I took my AB 1234 last week, thank you, city clerk. All right, procedural motions. Do I have a motion to read all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda by title only? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Did you aye that?
I said aye.
Oh, there we go, 4-0. Consent, we have any pulls? There's only two items.
None.
All right, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Baldino seconds.
Baldino second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes 4-0. All right, we are now on to our public hearing. This is a time and place here to fix a public hearing regarding the bargaining impasse between the City of El Segundo and the El Segundo Firefighters Association regarding terms and conditions of employment. City clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
It was, sir.
City clerk, has any written communication been received regarding the public hearing?
No, sir.
Public hearing is now open. Mr. George, who will make the presentation?
Yes, Mayor Potam. Legal counsel Laura Colty from Liberty Cassidy Whitmore will make the presentation.
Ms. Colty, who will wave once, again, people filing in. All right, the floor is yours.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor Potam and members of the council. We are here this evening for the public hearing on the bargaining impasse between the City of El Segundo and the El Segundo Firefighters Association. Staff is recommending that we conduct a public hearing on the bargaining impasse between the City of El Segundo and the El Segundo Firefighters Association regarding terms and conditions of employment. Staff is recommending either to adopt a resolution imposing the city's June 26, 2023 last, best, and final offer to the El Segundo Firefighters Association. This is pursuant to Government Code Section 3505 and implementing the related terms and conditions of employment, or alternatively, to discuss and take other action related to this item. So as a, a matter of background, the memorandum of understanding between the City of El Segundo and the El Segundo... and the El Segundo Firefighters Association expired on September 30, 2021. The city and ESFA have gone through two complete rounds of negotiations and have not been successful in negotiating a successor MOU. The first round of negotiations began October 6, 2021, and impasse was declared March 21, 2022. The parties went to fact-finding back on June 8, 2022. There were recommendations, and no terms and conditions were imposed at that time. The parties then began a second round of negotiations. You see the history related to this second round of negotiations detailed on the slide in front of you. The parties began negotiations October 25, 2022. You see the parties met eight times between October 2022 and May 2023. You see the detailed chronology of the meetings, the exchange of proposals, including informal supposal discussions. In looking at the dates in front of you, on May 17, 2023, the city communicated that it was putting forth its full economic authority and also provided a comprehensive redlined MOU and specific language confirming the city's current staffing model, which does not include mandatory staffing levels. You see, the city issued its last best and final offer on June 23, 2023. Thereafter, the city declared impasse on September 1, 2023, and the parties ultimately went to fact-finding. On the slide in front of you are the terms of the city's last best and final offer. So it's for approximately a one-year term. It proposes a salary increase of 1.5%. It proposes increasing the city's portion of medical contribution from the current 1,650 to 1,700 per month. It proposes increasing optical dental and life insurance from 135 to 184.25 per month. It proposes increasing the basic life insurance policy from 20,000 to 50,000. It also proposes including temporary upgrade pay for members working a minimum of 12 hours in a higher classification, that they would receive 5% of base salary for all hours worked. It also includes a residency requirement for new members of 100 road miles from fire headquarters. It also includes language related to what is currently in place regarding no prescribed staffing levels. So it states, "The city has the exclusive management right to increase or decrease the staffing levels and assign employees and maintain the efficiency of government operations." Upon approval and adoption of the MOU, the city will end its practice of backfilling overtime for 13-unit employees for each shift, and will have the sole discretion to determine safe and appropriate staffing levels and the type and number of apparatus staffed. So as we sit here today, the city does not have any prescribed staffing levels. There is no language to that effect in the MOU or other fire department provisions. However, assuming for the sake of argument, there has been a practice of backfilling up to at least 13, what this will do is end that practice. It does not mean that staffing will change, including upon if this council were to implement the terms and conditions, but rather staff would work with the chief to determine appropriate staffing levels, including in the event of any particular vacancies. All sworn ESFA members will retain their jobs, as well as their current salary and benefits, and in fact, the benefits and salary will be improved based on the terms of the LBFO we just reviewed. The city will, however, have the discretion to determine safe staffing for the department, which may include maintaining 13 personnel per shift. It may include increasing the number of personnel during critical incidents. It may include not backfilling personnel when there are leaves. What this does not mean is that the city is reducing the total number of sworn employees. The city will continue to have 43 full-time sworn employees. It does not mean that the city is reducing staffing levels for each shift. 13 association employees plus one battalion shift will still be the staffing model. Regular staffing will continue at 14 employees per shift. It does not mean that the city is reducing equipment or levels of service. The city will generally continue to operate two engines, two rescue, and one truck. What it does mean is that the city currently does not have required staffing levels. This will be confirmed in the terms and conditions of employment, so no change here. It means that in the event of temporary vacancies or a leave of absence, the fire chief will have the operational discretion to not force employees to work overtime. Staffing may be less than 13 association employees per shift. In terms of the procedural exhaustion of the impasse process, as a reminder, the contract expired September 30, 2021. The parties went through two complete rounds of negotiations. The impasse process has been exhausted. Fact-finding was conducted on November 20, 2023. The report was issued on December 20, and then posted on the city website on December 21. Council reviewed the fact-finding report, including on January 16, 2024. So the matter for council's consideration tonight is to either adopt a resolution imposing the city's June 26 last best and final, or alternatively to discuss and take other action related to this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colty. The public hearing is now up for public input. 12? So two minutes per speaker?
First up, Jeff Gurney.
Can we do two minutes and 30 seconds with 12? That, that gives us up to 30. There we go.
Hello. Before we be, begin, it's okay. I would.
Let's go, let's go three for Mr. Gurney, particularly as the president.
I, I do appreciate it. I'm actually gonna, I'm actually gonna ask respectfully. I know this was agendized on Friday, and I've, I've collected all the, the notes and thoughts and messages from 35 members from this labor group that potentially might be imposed on tonight. And it was a lot. And I'm hoping tonight that maybe we could bypass the three minutes. We can kind of get through one message. It might be a little long, but it, and out of haste and inefficiency, it would prevent other members from talking. It would just be me, and we'd be done.
So the 11 members would yield, 11 speakers would yield time?
I, I don't have 11 members. I have four members that are, can continue the speech, that we've, we've timed it out to be that I could just get it done in, in a little bit more of a linear fashion, if you're okay with that.
Mayor, is there anything in the code that prohibits it? So four times three, 12 minutes? The floor is yours, Mr. Gurney.
Much appreciated. Good evening, council. Local resident, local firefighter, and president of the El Segundo Firefighters. I would like to have a conversation with not only council tonight, but the community at large. Tonight, the city council is planning to, on imposing a contract on the El Segundo firefighters. Tonight's decision not only affects the firefighters, but it threatens the El Segundo community as well. And here's why. I'd like to start by defining and discussing backfilling. Backfilling is a function used by the fire department management to maintain the level of service, to make sure El Segundo always has the same number of firefighters and resources on duty per day, to meet safety standards, and perform as an effective firefighting response force. This function demands that current employees who are already working their normal 56 hours per week of straight time are required to work extra hours. If there is a vacancy in rank, or someone is sick, injured, or on leave, it is the responsibility of management to backfill for those open positions. If these positions are not filled, it will result in the shutdown of an emergency fire apparatus, like a fire engine or rescue ambulance. Backfilling does create overtime, but it is a necessary function of the fire service to maintain the expected level of service. Tonight, the city wants to impose a contract on the El Segundo firefighters that contains specific language that ends backfilling and threatens this level of service to the community. It reads, "Effective February 24, 2024, the city will end its practice of backfilling overtime for 13-unit employees for each shift, and will have the sole discretion to determine safe and appropriate staffing levels and the type and number of apparatus staffed." The city wants to end the practice of backfilling for 13-unit employees per shift. What does that mean, and how does it look? The fire department is budgeted for 13 members per day, 39 members in total. This includes nine captains, nine engineers, 12 fire paramedics, nine firefighters, split evenly over three shifts, A, B, and C. Each shift operates two fire engines. Each fire engine has a captain, engineer, and firefighter. One fire truck, captain, engineer, and firefighter. Two transporting rescue ambulances per day, two fire paramedics each. We are currently budgeted for this staffing level. So again, what would it look like if the city effectively ends backfilling? Let us use an example. On Saturday, February 24th, per the language, C-shift is on duty. C-shift currently has three unfilled staffing vacancies, two firefighter positions, and one fire paramedic. Based on this language, fire management will not backfill for those open positions with fire personnel from other shifts. This does not account for any other unplanned sick or injury, which would increase the number of vacancies on Saturday. This will result in reduced firefighter staffing, which will force the shutdown of a fire engine, rescue ambulance, and/or fire truck. The fact is, this imposed staffing language that ends backfilling will provide the citizens, businesses, visitors to El Segundo a significant reduction in service. Another serious consequence of this language is that it violates all automatic and mutual aid agreements with outside municipalities. An automatic and mutual aid agreement is a contract between cities that is designed to share resources when major incidents occur. For example, the Third Alarm Fire on Lomita Street, Friday, February 9, utilized auto and mutual aid agreements to call for extra resources from outside cities because El Segundo didn't have enough resources to battle the fire with its current staffing level. These agreements are based on specific staffing and resource levels that each municipality can provide. It needs to be a reciprocal relationship. In other words, LA County Fire is not going to agree to supplement El Segundo with fire resources when El Segundo has nothing to give in return. By ending backfilling, which compromises El Segundo's staffing levels agreed upon in these contracts, it violates the agreements and reduces the level of assistance from outside fire departments. The firefighters have been told that ending backfilling is the answer to control overtime. This is a short-sighted and only addresses the symptom and not the root problem. In the last four years, over 40% of the backfilling for our group was due to vacant positions. Let me repeat, 40% of the overtime over the last four years was due to vacant positions. If these vacancies were properly filled and new hires and promotional opportunities, the 40% increase in overtime would have been significantly reduced. Overtime should not be controlled by ending the practice of backfilling, but by addressing the reasons why it is occurring at a high rate. For example, in the 2223 budget for the fire department, our labor group was $50,000 over budget in overtime. However, we were almost $1 million under budget in straight time salaries. This data proves that the fire department is understaffed and that our members are required to fill the vacancies at high rates of overtime. Understood is one of the most stressful professions. Firefighting has high rates of cancer, depression, suicide, heart attacks, divorce, and PTSD. And El Segundo firefighters were forced to work longer shifts, shifts, to fill these vacancies away from their families, promoting and exacerbating the traumas of this already dangerous profession. Overtime is inevitable in the profession of firefighting. It is important to manage it appropriately. Ending backfilling is not the answer. Filling the vacancies in all ranks with proper planning and preparation to test and hire is the answer to maintain the established level of service per day in El Segundo's effective firefighting force. I need to discuss the budget. The fire department budget is about $14 million. The department includes five subdivisions: administration, prevention, emergency management, environmental, and fire suppression EMS. The fire department alone is 15% of the overall general fund budget. Referencing the annual comprehensive financial reports available on the website, I was able to see how the fire department has performed within their budget over the last five years. Of the last five years, the fire department was over its total budget in 2020 and 2021. But let's be fair and recognize that this was during the pandemic response, when chiefs and officers working around the clock on an all-hands incident management team, firefighters on the front lines exposed to COVID, subjected to quarantine teams for weeks at a time, lots of money was spent to plan, prepare, and fight the pandemic. These mandated policies impacted backfilling and increased expenses within the fire department. But what the financial report clearly doesn't show are the reimbursements. The city received reimbursements from FEMA and ARPA, the American Recovery Plan Act, a total amount of $2.1 million in reimbursed funds, which wiped out all over-budget expenses in 2020 and 2021. Bottom line, over the past five fiscal years, the fire department has operated within its overall budget. Within the fire budget, there are line items for overtime. Over the past five years, overtime, overtime has gone up. The average overtime expense per fiscal year over the last five years has been $2.3 million. I can understand how that number alone, without context, can be disconcerting to any citizen, especially if one is not familiar with the purpose and function of overtime. What may not be known is a portion of that overtime is reimbursed by other cities, state, and federal governments. This is due to wildland fire response. Over the past five years, the city has received over $1 million in reimbursements for overtime spent on these wildfires. When you subtract these reimbursements from the total overtime expenses and then compare the adopted versus the actual overtime expenses, our labor union came in $983,000 under budget over the past five fiscal years combined. The point here is to try and convey and prove there is no fiscal emergency regarding overtime. The fire department understands that budgets need to be adhered to, but all factors need to be evaluated and understood before drastically, drastic staffing measures are used to control a singular budgetary line item. I need to discuss negotiations. Let's roll back the clock to November 2022, when the city shut down Engine 32 for a period of six months. This experiment resulted in negative impacts on the community through delayed response times. An example of this was when it took over 12 minutes to respond to an emergency call for a young child suffering from a critical heart condition, where paramedics had to stop her heart on scene to reset it. This delay was directly due to the shutdown of Engine 32, because all other units were on calls, and Manhattan Beach paramedics had to respond. The young girl is doing fine, and we are thankful for that, but the patient and her family should not have had to endure that delay for medical treatment. How many times does this have to happen to make it wrong? After the trial period ended in May of 2023, this is when the city proposed the staffing language to end backfilling. Now faced with a new hurdle in negotiations, the El Segundo firefighters would not agree to this language. It was not only a threat to their safety, but a threat to the community as well. Impasse was declared, and El Segundo firefighters requested a fact-finding meeting to try and settle the issues. On November 20, 2023, the city's negotiating team and the firefighters association equally participated in a fact-finding meeting to openly present and discuss areas, areas of disparity with a goal of reaching an agreement. The only real divisive issue with the city's staffing language to end backfilling. And by the end of the meeting, the city's negotiating team agreed to a proposal. However, it was denied by council. The question is why? The fact-finder produced a public report on December 19, 2023, that recommended not to change the status quo regarding backfilling, that in fact, the city had not demonstrated there is a problem with the status quo, nor can it be improved on with this language. The city rejected this report in its entirety and has decided to impose their terms and conditions on your El Segundo firefighters and the community at large. It is generally accepted that a municipality has the right to determine the overall level of, of fire protection that it wants. However, regardless of the level of fire protection chosen, neither the citizens nor the elected representatives have the right to jeopardize the safety of the employees providing those services. The city's language to end backfilling is not based on data, facts, or a comprehensive study to determine impacts. This is a dangerous stopgap method to control one line item in the budget, overtime, and it only addresses a symptom of deeper root problem, open vacancies. If backfilling is ended, it will reduce the number of firefighters on duty and consequently reduce the fire. reduce the fire engines and rescue ambulances available to the citizens and businesses of El Segundo. It is clear to us through recent historical evidence, namely the shutdown of Engine 32, that the city is looking for a way to reduce staffing and shut down resources to control budgetary fluctuations like overtime. The city's desire to end backfilling confirms that the city is willing to lower the level of service, jeopardizing the safety of the community and its firefighters, to solve a symptom and ignoring the political courage to look deeper into the root causes and understand that it will take a more informed and comprehensive approach to reduce overtime. Amid the controversial staffing language, El Segundo firefighters are the lowest paid compared to all surrounding surveyed agencies. We haven't had a cost of living since 2020. Call volume is up 25%. We're facing severe morale issues, instability, being devalued. We're facing issues of retention, recruitment, and current employees will leave to other surrounding departments for better pay to provide for their families. New candidates who didn't get picked up by other surrounding departments will land here as a temporary alternative, not a destination, and statistics show that they will use El Segundo to gain training and certifications to test back out departments. Just a little bit more, sir, I appreciate it. Is that okay?
I'm gonna, I'll give you a couple more seconds, wind it up, okay?
It's just, okay, it was, it's one paragraph, that's all I have. We would appreciate it. The El Segundo Firefighters Association strongly disagrees with the decision to impose this contract tonight, but the council owns this decision. The decision to impose, the decision to end backfilling, the decision to underpay your employees, it's solely on you, the council. I expected my city to invest in its firefighters like they have invested themselves into this city. This terms and conditions creates a contentious environment, unsafe workplace, frustrated employees, detachment from the community, retention recruitment problems, and overall instability.
Mr. Gurney.
Three more sentences, please. That's it?
I'll just send me a colon, go for it.
I can have them stand up and read the rest, too.
Go for it, go for it. Finish up, please. Please, finish up, please.
All El Segundo firefighters swore an oath to the community when we took the responsibility to protect lives, property, and environment, and you, the council, also took an oath to serve the city to the best of your abilities and be stewards of a safe and healthy work environment for its employees. If the city imposes tonight, it'll be damaging itself more than the apparent object of its frustration. Thank you for the opportunity to voice the concerns of the El Segundo firefighters.
Thank you, Mr. Gurney. Next.
Kurt Crosson.
The next three were the four.
Oh, very well, thank you.
All the way up to Dan and Matt? Okay, perfect, thank you. Rebecca Stack.
Rebecca Gaines Stack, daughter of former councilman, property owner, and my husband is one of your dedicated firefighters. This council has not given its firefighters a fair working contract for almost three years. Do you realize how this harms morale? Forcing your proposed one-year terms now is downright criminal. Your taxpayers, residents, daytime population, and dedicated employees deserve better. It is not cheap to operate your fire department. This is the reality, but it must be done properly and safely or not at all. Understaffing, whether by not hiring and training new recruits, or electing not to rehire these critical daily positions, is criminal, putting your community at risk for major exposure to literal disaster. If you are unwilling to run your fire department properly, do what, then do what's right and contract with LA County. You cannot kick this can down the road any further. Imposing your 12-month term does no good. I read the staff report related to this agenda item. It was prepared and reviewed by Ms. Reddick, your HR director. Does she also moonlight as your fire chief? What a busy person. She deserves, she deserves a raise if not the day off work tomorrow. Meanwhile, other departments, public works, planning, building, safety, police, get neglected with no HR support while Ms. Reddick wears her fire chief hat? In any case, in this staff report, you ask your HR director to explain which goals and objectives are met. She picked fiscal sustainability, not one mention of protection of human life or property. My suggestion, let your HR director do her job. Do what is right for this community. Go back to the drawing board here with your new fire chief, and finally, give your firefighters a fair working contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stack.
Fred Curcio.
Good evening, City Council. Fred Curcio, I live over on Cedar Street in El Segundo. I've been here since 1961. My career has been in the fire service. I've worked all through the South Bay, and I'm just here in support of our fire department. I grew up here. It seems like, over the years, when I was little, we had three fire trucks in the city. We had a lot more baseball parks, we had more swimming pools. I know we got a lot of financial issues. You guys got your work cut out for you. All I can do is, is say that we should probably go back and sit down and talk before you make some decisions. This has been going on for a while, and I can see there's a lot of headaches, but I would just take time and think things through a little more. I don't think cutting, if that's what you guys are looking at in the future, I don't think that's good for the city of El Segundo. There was a study, if I'd have known that this was gonna be this deep tonight, I would have looked this up, but I believe LA City had a contract issue years ago, probably in the 90s, and they, I think, hired the RAND Corporation to evaluate everything with the fire department. And the RAND Corporation came back and said, for every buck that you're spending on the fire department, you're getting like three or $5 worth of value. They were like, don't even touch them. Same thing with the police, the hats that these guys have to wear, we're all aware, but this is like an insurance for the city. The people live here, it's an insurance policy, the police and the fire and the city services. And all the stuff that the police have to deal with, and all the things that the fire department has to deal with, hazardous materials, shootings, stabbings, car accidents, extrication, fires, that takes manpower, and that takes money. But the main thing is the safety of the civilians, the citizens, and the safety of the people that are performing the duties for the police and fire. So I'm in support of them, and if you need to go back and sit down and talk, that's what you should do.
Thank you, Mr. Curcio.
Danielle, Danielle McMillan.
Hi, council members, thanks for having me. Most of you know me, but just in case, I'm Danielle McMillan, I'm a 12-year resident of El Segundo. I'm here today in reference to the motion to change language to staffing profiles of the El Segundo Fire Department. I sent you a letter this afternoon that I wrote a week ago. I'd like to redo that letter now. This was to Chief Avery. I'm writing this letter to express our deepest appreciation and gratitude for the outstanding service and dedication that the members of the El Segundo Fire Department showed on February 9th, 2024. My husband and I were away on a vacation when we got a call that our storage warehouse on Lomita Street was on fire. The fire started quickly and spread so rapidly, by the time we received the notification and sent Fred to check on the warehouse, it was completely involved. The professionalism, bravery, and quick response of the El Segundo Fire Department employees was exemplified on this very dynamic fire. The fire department's prompt arrival, coordinated response with assisting agencies, and skillful execution in extinguishing the fire prevented further damage to adjacent exposures and ensured the safety of our community. This has been a devastating experience for my husband and I, but we find comfort in living in a community that has the support of the El Segundo Fire Department. Although our warehouse is a total loss, we know that we only lost things. The fire department personnel have shown us so much empathy and kindness in one of our lowest times. Through my work as a lifeguard section chief for the Los Angeles County Fire Department, I've already experienced the dedication to excellence your employees have shown. I would like to extend my appreciation to the entire department, including the firefighters, paramedics, dispatchers, and support staff. Each member plays a vital role in ensuring the smooth operation of the department and the overall safety of our community. Once again, thank you for exceptional service and selfless commitment to saving lives and property. Please convey our appreciation to all members of the El Segundo Fire Department. Your relentless efforts and commitment to serving others are deeply appreciated. I'd like to end with this. I'm also a first responder and a paramedic. I just got off the phone with one of my own work meetings. I was reminded by my coworker that we do what we do because of our love for each other and our love for the people we serve. I ask that you consider what the employees are risking when they step on the outdoor and are ready to respond for us.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan.
Thank you.
Anna Marie Van Hosen.
Hi, good evening. I'm Anna Marie Van Hosen. I'm a resident here in town. I live on Acacia with my husband and our two young children. We moved from LA City in part for better public service and to be in a city that values its public servants. When we walk down the street to our park, I am proud to observe all of the American flags with the thin red line and the thin blue line, supporting our fire and our police. This proposed plan is problematic in three ways. First, financially. I've read the fact-finding reports, I've heard the comments here today. To solve this overtime problem, it's very simple, you need to fill the vacancies. You will not be able to do that if, as I understand it, the firefighters are 15 to 20% below market salary rates. Giving a 1.5% raise will not solve that difference. This plan would likely actually cost the city more money overall because you will have understaffed and overworked firefighters, which will lead to injuries, and that will be very expensive in the long run. Second, turning to public safety. That language, I'm an attorney, that language in the plan leaves sole discretion to the city. It sets no standards. It is not based upon a safety report, OSHA standards, any other standards. I would never advise a client to sign that contract. Additionally, I have heard no mention as to whether the city council has discussed this issue with the many businesses in the city. I suspect, because my firm represents some of these businesses, that they have insurance policies that require certain firefighting standards to be in place, a fully-staffed fire department within certain mileage. If you fall below that standard, what will happen to those cities and will they, those companies, and will they be in good standing with their insurance policies? The third issue is really a moral or a cultural issue. The fire department is beloved in our community. They bring Santa to Candy Cane Lane, they're in the parade, they host 9/11 pancake breakfasts.
Time is up.
Thank you. My three-year-old said to me when I was coming here, I like the firefighters and I wish I could come too, so I just ask that you keep that in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hosen.
Scott Houston.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Protam, council members. Scott Houston, longtime resident of El Segundo, over 20-plus years, just coming down as a private citizen and as a resident, on behalf of our firefighters. I saw this was on the agenda tonight, you know, I wanted to come down at least to voice my opinion. As has been said by many already, this has been such a longstanding issue for us. I know, I get it. It's not easy, but at the same time, we have a great fire department. We have strong men and women who are here to support us every day. Whenever I hear the sirens, and I've heard a lot of sirens more recently in our community, even during these rainstorms, I always worry about what is taking place in our town. And we also have a very big daytime population, as you know. So I'm not saying anything you don't already know as our electeds, but at the same time, I think we have to make sure we give the resources to our fire department to do the work that they need to do. And one thing that struck me as really concerning in the reports is our mutual aid agreements, because I think we're so dependent at this time on the mutual aid of our neighbors when we're understaffed and under-resourced, and they don't always have the resources either. So I hope that this does not impede those contracts, but I think that that's something the council really needs to weigh and measure. And then the other thing is, I think because we do have a new fire chief, I have not met him yet, but we do have a new fire chief, and I think it would be good for us to hear his opinion, now that he's come on board, to this potential impasse or situation. But long story short, you know, I think we all love our firefighters, we support them, we want to find the right balance to make this work. So I want to really applaud Jeff Gurney and his leadership and the work he's been doing for years on this, and we have to continue having this dialogue, but we also need to come to an agreement at some point. So I hope that level heads will prevail tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Houston.
James Falls.
Good evening, City Council, City Staff, Chief Avery. My name is James Falls, I'm the Vice President of the Manhattan Beach Firefighters Association, Local 3925. I'm here to not, excuse me, I'm currently a fire captain, paramedic with Manhattan Beach Fire Department, and was fortunate enough to start my career here with the city of El Segundo as a firefighter in 2008. As such, I feel I have an institutional knowledge of not only the fire service, but the El Segundo Fire Department, and hope I can share some light on what's going on tonight. Before I go any further, I'd like to share that the views and the statements I shared tonight are mine and those shared of the Manhattan Beach firefighters, and do not of the city of Manhattan Beach, nor the fire, city of Manhattan Beach Fire Department, nor am I representing the city in any official capacity tonight. I feel an obligation to stand before you tonight and voice my concerns regarding this decision to impose these conditions upon your firefighters and ask you to reconsider, not only for the sake of the El Segundo firefighters and its citizens, but also my Manhattan Beach firefighters and my Manhattan Beach citizens, which you will put at risk. The item in particular I would like to discuss is the language of your last best and final offer to the El Segundo firefighters surrounding the maintenance of a staffing level of 13. While I respect management's rights to determine the appropriate staffing levels for each city to include this language and communicate the draw, excuse me, to do so without the language communicating the drawdown policy or the matrix is irresponsible in putting the cart before the horse. From the language, I can only conclude that you look to shut down resources such as engines, rescues, and the truck based on vacancies, vacations, sicknesses, IODs, and other leave needs. The loss of these resources, or, excuse me, resource or resources will create a void that will ultimately result in greater dependence on outside mutual aids such as Manhattan Beach. As I stand here tonight looking at the possibility of reducing services, our city is considered at, our city, Manhattan Beach, is considering adding personnel and resources. That said, I want to assure you that the Manhattan Beach firefighters are not willing to augment your city staffing at the literal cost of Manhattan Beach residents or decreasing resource availability for our residents. To pursue your current course would also put your recruitment and retention at risk. Two more sentences.
Thank you, Mr. Falls.
If any of the firefighters of the El Segundo Firefighters Association find this, if you do continue your course, please know that we are hiring and we are willing to support you.
Thank you, sir.
Peter Heck.
Honorable Mayor, wherever you are, and members of City Council, my name is Pete Heck. I'm the President of the Manhattan Beach Firefighters Association. Tonight, I stand before you, not only as a representative of our association, but also a colleague of the El Segundo firefighters and a committed stakeholder in our shared responsibility to uphold safety and emergency response services to the residents of South Bay. The proposal set forth by council tonight has stirred profound concern within our firefighting community. The notion of not backfilling positions and allowing staffing levels to fluctuate based on factors such as illness, injury, vacation schedules raises significant concerns. There are at least three fire departments unions in the audience tonight that have never heard of not having a minimum staffing clause. I don't know of any other departments in LA County that run their department that way. It is imperative to understand the dangerous implications of such fluctuating staffing levels on firefighter safety. Decreased manpower directly translates to heightened risks and increased workloads of those on duty, particularly during emergency incidents. It is crucial to recognize that timely rescue of lost or trapped firefighters often relies on presence of adequate personnel within an affected structure. Therefore, the direct correlation between staffing levels and fire safety, firefighter safety cannot be overstated. It is ironic that my city council, a few miles away in Manhattan Beach, are considering increasing firefighter staffing in a meeting as we speak right now. Their proposal is to add seven sworn paramedic, members to our ranks and add a new paramedic ambulance resource, increasing our staffing by 25%. This difference in approach highlights the weight of the decision before the council tonight. Further, I must comment on the timing of these proposed measures, considering the recent appointment of El Segundo's new fire chief. appointment of El Segundo's new fire chief. Such conditions pose a considerable challenge to his ability to effectively lead the department. Mind if I finish up?
Go ahead. You've got a sentence. Go for it.
I'm sorry. I've lost my train of thought here. As the council sought—the—as the council sought input of Chief Avery regarding the implications of variable staffing on firefighter safety, departmental policies, and operational guidelines, it is doubtful that a seasoned chief such as himself would endorse such a proposal without considering its ramifications.
Thank you, Mr. Heck.
Good evening. My name is Greg Van Hosen. I work for the LA County Sheriff's Department, where I've been there for the last 12 years, currently with the Tactics and Survival Training Unit. But more importantly, I'm a resident of El Segundo, where I live with my beautiful wife and two boys. You know, tonight, I was actually out teaching a class on active shooter response. And one of the questions that I posed to the students was, "What type of individual do you want to respond to your children's school in the event that there's an active shooter there?" And we came up with some traits. We said that the individuals should be courageous, they should be physically fit, they should be physically capable, they should be well-trained and well-equipped. And that starts to sound a lot like the men and women that I see standing here at the back of the room behind me. My concern with these current policies or this—these recommendations is that it would leave the firefighters of this city short-staffed. And more—you know, very important to myself would be that they're unable to respond in the event there is a critical incident at one of these places in El Segundo, like one of my children's schools. I would ask that you guys reconsider, because I am willing to invest in public safety, and I think a lot of the residents here are as well. I would hope that you guys are too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Hosen. Madam clerk, is that everyone? Right. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moves.
Do I have a second?
Baldino seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Council discussion.
Let's just be clear what's happening. There isn't anything existing now that mandates a staffing level of 13. What we're saying is that we're going to give discretion of staffing levels to the city, which is delegated to the city manager, which is delegated to our fire chief. That doesn't mean we're cutting the amount of firemen. It doesn't mean anything other than we are making literal what the policies are and what I believe have been. We have the utmost faith—at least I do—in our fire department, in our firefighters, and in our new chief. And the fact that there's been a negotiation about this—it's 2021 and nothing's been accomplished—to me is a good reason to impose and start negotiating again. We've got a new chief. Everyone here wants what's best for El Segundo. And because of the way the contracts and MOUs and everything is written, we've got to do what we've got to do as a city to make sure that we're being responsibly, fiscally, as well as supporting the safety of the people in this town. So I—I like the comments that I heard. I like the admission from the union representative that there is an overtime problem. I like the concession that he said the city does have the right to choose staffing level. These are true statements. Okay? With that being said, you know, I—I think there's been a long history that it's gotten to this point, and we need to move forward.
Further comments?
I'm going to echo a little bit about—about Councilmember Baldino said is that—the way I look at this and the way I've looked at this from the beginning is, it's essentially giving a management tool to your chief to manage the organization. As you saw from the—the comments or the slideshow that was given to you, to my knowledge, we are trying to get or hiring to full-staffed. So there's no discussion about reducing staff whatsoever at all. What this does is essentially—our—our code currently does not have a prescribed staffing level. All this does is reiterate what's exactly in our code. What this does is allow our chief or our management to go over the 13 if it's necessary, under the 13 if it's not necessary, but it literally gives this person the management tools to manage the organization. That was what my intent was, and I'm pretty sure the intent of the rest of the council was—to literally put the decision-making into the hands of the actual experts. That's what this is. There's nothing in there. You can—you can argue the level of compensation and COLA and all that stuff, and we are—because I'm pretty sure after this, we're going to get right back to the—to—the bargaining table. It's just going to begin again. But—but this is to literally give our chief the ability to manage the organization. That's what the intent of this is. Thank you.
So I'm going to echo Councilmember Baldino and Jerome's comments. You know, safety is a priority for the council. You know, it's one of our goals to ensure our residents have or feel safe and secure. And our goal was really to ensure that the management team has the tools proper to—to staff the level—staff the fire department at the levels they need to be staffed at. You know, when it came to mutual aid, you know, I know that we did some work—some—did some data stats on mutual aid, and we actually over—we over—our mutual aid to Manhattan Beach is greater than Manhattan Beach to El Segundo. So we're not intending to change that, but we just need to ensure that our management team has the right tools to ensure that our—our town is safe. And our intent is to—we have to follow the rules of negotiations, and so by imposing, we can now start moving forward on nego—open the negotiations up again to talk about compensation. So that's kind of where we are, and—and that's—you know, so our goal is to ensure our community is safe.
Is it possible—I know we concluded the presentation—to pull up the one—that last slide about what this imposition would do? Oh, go forward, one. Who's the one I think that made explicit that when the chief wants to staff to a certain level, the chief can staff at a certain level? We—we know how the fire department is staffed, or at least I—I think I do and have a pretty good grasp of it. And if the new chief shows up and says, "I need to backfill"—much like when we—we broached the brownout and we said to the chief then, "Hey, if this is not working, put it back on." So I appreciate when—when President Gurney comes up here—I—I appreciate the concern about promotion is a big deal. How we assess firefighters in—that's a big deal. Those are things that, no doubt, we are trying to attack. But also, we are delegating—no one up here is qualified to dictate tactics and operations to fire service. That's full stop. Right? What we can do is set budgets, right? But we delegate to the fire chief by means of this how he's going to accomplish that mission. And I think we all agree what that mission is, right? And that's certainly not 12-minute response time. So if he tells us he needs 13 on and needs to backfill, that is within his prerogative, even with this imposition. And I know we stumble over the word "will" in that clause, because we had to be briefed on it about 100 times about what does the word "will" mean, which for some of us, a certain area of fighting over what a word means is—is—is a little bit odd. But in this, the fire chief has a discretion to staff and make mission, and he can backfill it as he sees fit. We see no change on this. But it's us with our prerogative delegating to the city manager, who delegates to the fire chief, to accomplish that mission in the manner he sees fit. I've been up here for six years. We've not turned down a request for staffing, and we've not turned down a request for equipment from anyone in public safety, anyone in public works, anyone in the fire department, anyone in the police department. So I think that people need to understand going out of here that while there's some contractual verbiage in here, it is not in any way designed to affect or change level of service. What it does is affect the authority to prescribe the staffing levels, and it delegates that to the fire chief. But any further council comments? City attorney, would you like to read the first resolution?
Yes, Mayor and Council, there are two resolutions this evening. The first is a resolution imposing the city's last best and final offer to the El Segundo Firefighters Association, IAFF, Local 3682, pursuant to Government Code Section 3505 at SEC, and implementing the related terms and conditions of employment is ready for adoption.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Yep. Baldino so moves.
For a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
City attorney, will you read the second resolution by title only?
Mayor and council, a resolution fixing the employer contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an equal amount for employees in annuitants with respect to a recognized employees' organization, 004 El Segundo Firefighters Association, is ready for adoption.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Baldino so moves.
Seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Start presentation for item five, strategic media update.
Yes, Mayor Protem and council, this item will be a discussion or an update, really, on our strategic plan. Our current strategic plan that—if you recall—we met with the executive team and the council roughly six months ago to discuss a series of goals and objectives with strategies associated with achieving those goals and objectives. And tonight, we're going to present kind of a mid-year update of where we are in achieving those—those goals. I'll turn it over to Barbara Voss for this, our deputy city manager.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council. As the city manager mentioned, I'll be providing an update on our progress for the five goals of the strategic plan. I provided a report to council with—with all of the—the top strategies within the strategic plan. It's a lot of strategy. And within that report, there were highlights of key accomplishments from each department for each of the strategies. So I'm not going to read or go through each and every one of those accomplishments. I hope that you will take—or you already have probably taken the time to—to look through them. If there's any particular strategy that you have questions about or that you would like to bring out and identify, please do. I will start with going through each of the five goals. And I also wanted to begin by introducing Marizan Ramos. She's been introduced before, I think, but she is our special projects administrator. She's the one working the magic over here on Monday.com, which is the new software that we've purchased so that we can better monitor and update the strategic plan. And this was really important for us, because a strategic plan to be effective really needs to be a living document, not something that's on a shelf, not something that's collecting dust, but something that people are looking at on a bi-weekly, monthly basis, just reminding themselves of what the priorities are, what the strategies are associated with each of the goals, where are they with accomplishing those particular strategies. So this Monday.com has really brought that to life. And each of the directors and each of the departments has access to this. They are providing updates. So let me just begin. Goal one, enhance customer service, diversity, equity, inclusion, and communications. Goal one has three strategies. And of those three strategies, there's one that is considered to be a top 10 priority by city council, as identified during our last year's strategic planning session. Goal two, that's public safety, enhance community safety and preparedness. And that goal has six strategies, as you see there. Of those six strategies, two are part of the top 10 priorities. Goal three, promote a quality workforce through teamwork and organizational efficiencies. Goal three has five strategies. Those goals, strategies, and then action items are kind of an internal process to accomplish the strategies. Goal four, develop and maintain quality infrastructure and technology. That one has 14 strategies. And one that is in the top 10 priorities, the plunge. So that's an easy one to remember. Goal five is in champion economic development and fiscal sustainability. Goal five has eight strategies, and four of those are top 10 priorities of city council. So that's an overview. We have a total of 36 strategies on our strategic plan and top 10 priorities. So this is where we are. The choices are—as you go through each of the strategies and everybody updates it—it's either a work in progress or it's complete. And then we're asking everyone to put in a due date. Now, a lot of the strategies—the way that they're written—are work in progress. For example, one of my strategies is implement the economic development program. So I won't really be done with that until June 30th. So it would be in here as ongoing work in progress. As you drill down into this, there are action items, there are notations of everything that's been done in each—towards achieving each of the strategies. But overall, with all the 36 strategies, this is where we are. Most are work in progress, and a couple are completed. How many are completed there, Marizan? 5.6% complete. And then we anticipate it by June 30th. Not 100% completion, because this is a multi-year strategic plan. So—but it'll be a lot more green than blue there. Then, in addition to the 36 strategies and the 10—top 10 priorities, we have Attachment B to the strategic plan, which is our—our technology items. So the ITSD department and Jose Calderon, the director, have been working towards each of these. There were 10 items on that technology attachment, and one's completed—that was the library management system—but the other nine are in progress. So we are aligning with the strategic plan from a technology perspective in implementing those—those strategies and action items. All right. So then I wanted to break down in a little bit more detail the top 10 priority strategies. And you can see here, the overall progress towards the top 10 strategies is to the right there. Ongoing is 72%. Completed is 24.5 or 6% there. And then there's one that's on hold. And the one that's on hold is the fire department accreditation process. The new chief, coming in new, is reviewing that process, and he will evaluate and determine cost-benefit next steps on that one. So for now, that's on hold. So goal one, 31.8% complete. The rest are ongoing. Goal two, 22% complete. Goal three, 12-point—I'm having trouble reading that. 12-point—yes. 12.5% complete. Goal four is—that—that top 10 one is the plunge. So that's just a work—in—that is a work in progress. But within Monday, within the system, we've notated all of the actions that have been taken towards getting towards completing the plunge. And then goal five, 26% complete, and the rest of it is a work in progress. So the next section is the updates that are provided by staff. And this is just a sampling. Staff members are putting in—so at any given moment, any one of you could come to me or another director and say, "Where are we on this?" We can pull up Monday. There'll be notes in there. We'll be updated. So we're using this to keep us on track. And then, in addition, these updates are being pulled to the city manager update that goes to you monthly, and that city manager update is also focused on the top 10 priorities. So you're getting that information monthly. Staff is updating it at least monthly, often more. So the data is really being monitored. And then just some highlights here. We can query on completed items. You'll see the list of completed items there. The report that I provided has extensive lists of completed items and statuses on other things. And within each of those—actually, can you go back to the batteries then? So you might—you might ask, like, for goal five— So you might, you might ask, like for goal five, the green, what's completed? So you can, you can look right there and you could see exactly what's completed within goal five. So everything is captured within the software. Next step, on April 3rd, the executive team is going to be reviewing where we are with the strategic plan, looking at next year, determining what needs to be added, what we can take away and how best to move forward into the next fiscal year. And then on April 30th, there will be a strategic planning session with council. And at that point, you can look in more depth. We'll also have a report for you then that includes the highlights and the status and where we are with all of the goals and strategies. And we can go through the strategic planning process together and determine an updated strategic plan for next year. And if you have any questions about any of the items, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks. How long have you been using the Monday website for this?
Two months, two months, yeah.
Okay. And who has access, executives or pretty much anyone?
Each department designates two seats. So in some cases, the director and a staff person, other cases, it's two staff people and the director kind of just keeps track of it in other ways. So it's two per department right now.
Okay. So every department has individuals whose job it is to maintain what's been going on and update this. So the executive team all has kind of a snapshot of where we're at any given moment?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So one of the things we've always asked about is celebrating our successes as far as accomplishments.
Yes.
It would be great as these, as when the departments go in and update and complete these, that we're get, receive some type of notification or we, we thank, you know, bring it to the council to say, you know, we, goal, this goal is accomplished. But that way, we can actually acknowledge the work that the city is doing and recognize the people that were able to get the goals accomplished. So I just think it's great that we're capturing it, but I also want to make sure that we're thanking the people for getting the job done.
Absolutely. We're, right now, it doesn't take it far enough, but we are, we're including the accomplishments in the city manager update. And we're also putting a update, not so much strategic plan update for the public, but we are putting some key projects that are completed in the newsletter that goes out to the public and city news. But I think it's a great idea to have some sort of recognition before council.
I think what can be difficult with these is that we sometimes have projects that are big, linger in the background for so long that they fall into the, the important but not urgent bucket and they just sort of swim along in the back. So I know it's not because they don't grab a lot of the top line things, but I, I think of, of things like Park Place, right, which is a, you know, $125 million project that sort of hovers and the, well, we might make progress on it, but it doesn't, it's not, doesn't capture the imagination. So finding ways to make those things apparent, or I know we have something in here about beautifying our entrances from, from city of LA and from neighboring cities, those things are sort of nebulous because it's hard to assign action items to them. And because of that, it's harder to tick them off. But anything we can do to, to make those more apparent is, is helpful.
Yes, I think that's a very important observation as we go into the strategic planning session because a lot of our strategies are very big and broad and they do get kind of lost. So within strategic planning, we can work on getting those strategies of exactly what do we want to accomplish in the next year, the next two years and writing it in such a way that it's more easily tracked and measurable.
Yeah, probably a little more systematic on what are the tactical and operational things that feed into each strategic point. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, to that point, actually, as we go into this strategic planning meeting, is there, is there credence to looking at items that are, or can be accomplished in 12 to 24 months as a short-term strategic plan items? It, it, there's things that can be done that we weren't working on that can be completed during that timeframe. And there's a much bigger picture, Rec Park, the plunge and obviously the things he's talking about. So almost dividing it up between short-term and long-term strategies because I think in the end, sometimes you want to see a win, right? Instead of continuously kind of updating, updating. But I, I think there might be something to look at there.
Absolutely. And the capabilities are here. We can do within the fiscal year, within the next two years, three years and divide it up. This has the ability to create all sorts of different dashboards. These are just some simple ones that we're showing tonight, but we can do whatever kind of setup that we need to do to, to get some wins in that one-year period.
Do I have consensus received?
Oh, good. I was going to say, if I follow up to Councilman Perstic's comment about celebrating successes, one of the things that I've included in my quarterly town hall meetings, if you will, with the staff is that we invite a staff person, not a department head, but a staff person to come up in front of the entire group to share a success that they had in that particular quarter. And it's been very successful, very highly appreciated by, by the team. And I think that, that's so important because we've got so many strategies and priorities that while this is a wonderful management tool and it helps me to work with the department heads, again, filtering down through the organization to, to see where we are at any given time, but it is important to celebrate those successes, I agree.
Consensus received and filed?
Thank you.
So conside. Item six, the mid-year budget and secondary, second quarter fiscal year 2023, 2024 financial report. Cool report on this item?
Yes, Finance Director Paul Chung will present this item.
Is that back-to-back meetings for our new finance director? Man, well, welcome to the fire, buddy.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and city council members. Tonight, I'll be presenting the, the second quarter financial report and the mid-year review and staff's recommendation. So the presentation is about 17 slides. If you have specific questions while I'm going through these questions instead of waiting to the end, please feel free to jump in and ask these questions. Being that sometimes just kind of coming back will be difficult, but I'll begin with the second quarter. As you're aware, second quarter is October through December of 2023. And for the most part, the staff report and the attachments provide the non-general fund summaries and key points. My presentation was focused on the general fund as general fund is close to 70% of our overall budget. Just to start on general fund, high-level highlights for the revenue side. Our general fund realized $23.9 million or 27% of the budget during this quarter and versus last quarter of year-over-year of 30 million or 37%. And so that, that difference or that variation between year-over-year, I took a look at it and just to make sure what is going on as being five weeks in, I got an opportunity to just really look at everything under a microscope. And really it came down to timing of receipts. Most of our receipts were about four and a half months in that was recorded, meaning that the cash did come in, but we weren't able to receipt it into our financial system by the time we presented the financial report to the council. So we're about four and a half months versus last year, we were about five and a half months. So you see that difference there. And main driver was our property tax. And I'll go into the little more detail as we progress through the slides. Our big five revenue sources are on pace and on budget or to exceed the budget towards fiscal year end. And a better benchmark is quarter three, where majority of our bigger revenues will be recorded into our financial system during that time. So next quarter, when I present to the council, I should have better numbers regards to how we're doing year-to-date as well. So let me jump into some of the detail behind the numbers. I went in and highlighted few revenues that I wanted to cover for the city council tonight. On the sales tax and during this quarter, meaning year-to-date, we've collected $5.3 million of the $14.8 million budget. And really looking at not only during this period, but just kind of looking into even January, just to see how we're doing, it looks like we're close to $1.25 million of sales tax month over month for the past six months. So when you multiply that for about 12 months, you're looking at $15 million on sales tax. So our sales tax is on pace with what we budgeted during the budget process. On the business license tax, as you know, the new measure kicked in in January. So during this reporting period, we were able to capture that. But being that we already issued these during January, we issued over 5,429 business licenses. And so far, the only outstanding items are 34 business licenses that we need to follow up, but the bigger ticket item business licenses were collected and received it. And we were close to $14.1 million during this January period. I know I'm kind of jumping into January, but I wanted to give you that comparison versus the budget of $14.3 million.
So just for, for clarification, there's only 34 outstanding business licenses that have not been paid out of all the business licenses?
Yes.
That's amazing.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes. On the TLT side, I know it's not highlighted, but regards to TLT, it looks like we're collecting close to what we were doing last year, but last year, of course, was the COVID year where we saw a big pent-up demand and we saw that revenue really come in. And now as it plateaued, we're close to what we budgeted, really at $12.8 million. I got some data points regards to some of our consultants that track this data. And we received that 82.2% occupancy rate versus 75% last year. So we are seeing a, a bigger increase in occupancy rate on our hotels. And also our average room rates are looking at $159 versus 153 this time last year. So we are seeing a growth in our local economy on our TLT as well. Moving on to the property tax, property taxes, as you can see, we only collected $169,000. We did collect the big property tax in December of $4.3 million, but due to timing, it wasn't reflected during this reporting period, but it is received it now and is reflected in our financial system. And so we look at to property tax year-over-year, we are close to 9% higher than we were last year. So we are seeing continual excess, our assessed property values continue to rise and that's a good sign for the local El Segundo property tax. On the utility user side, we are also on track to hit our revenues as we've seen it peak during this post-COVID environment where we saw quite a bit of utilities go up. And also the side effect was that utility users tax also has increased quite a bit. And we are on pace to come in at what we've budgeted on our utility users tax.
Last time we had that spike, we attested to the, the spike in natural gas prices. Do we know individually what's buoying that UUD rise? Because that's, that's significantly higher than it was three years ago.
Mayor Pro Tem, at this time, I wouldn't know the exact breakdown if it happened to be the gas, but I can look into that and get back to you.
I think for us, it's just a matter of planning on, are those sort of outliers that we would put into capital costs? Or if it's going to be a part of, of a trend, we'd be more comfortable making that as an O and M allocatable revenue stream?
What I can do is during the next quarter three update, I can provide you more of a breakdown on that utility users tax and what we're seeing.
That'd be, that'd be a very helpful idea for us to spend money that just disappears because it's.
No, absolutely. I'll do that. And the last item, item 13 here, just wanted to highlight for the council, that interest slash rental income. We are seeing quite a bit of a rise in our investment income, which the city treasurer and I had a discussion and he's just done a phenomenal job just locking in those 5% yields. And so we've been seeing that as well flowing through the city as well. So that's a great sign as well. Moving on to, oh, just this next slide was a slide, I believe, my predecessor provided to the city council. It's just really a summary sheet of various status of where we are with revenues. I don't want to go through each and every one of them, but on the top line towards the right, there's 0% for transfers in. That really is just a timing as the second half of the fiscal year, you'll see that transfers in occur. So you'll see that in the second quarter or third quarter or the fourth quarter. On the middle, second row there, at the beginning rate, the franchise tax, only 2%, but we do see that in April. So you'll see that coming in during the second half of the fiscal year. And then dropping down to the last line, probably towards the, the way right, the tax resolution agreement with Chevron, we see that at the end of March. So you'll see that during the next quarter three update as well regards to how much we've collected from Chevron. Moving on to expenditures on the general fund side. General fund, we expended $45.6 million or 47% of the budget versus 41 or 41% of the budget last year. And really we're in line with our expected budget expenditure budget. Our departmental vacancies though, we are still seeing a high vacancy rate of 10%. Historically, I was told that we had about an 11% historic vacancy rate. So we are under that, but still quite close to that historic 11%. I met with the fire chief at least three times already regards to overtime. And I know there was discussions regards to fire departments overtime. We are drilling into the detail. I just need a little bit more time, but we will come back to the city council during the budget study session to give you more, the details regards to the budget for overtime for fire department.
I just have one question on the departmental vacancies. Does that include the additional fire, additional police that we increased? We increased the number of, so that does the, by 10? So, because of, because that we knew, we purposely increased it by 10, knowing that would take us a lot, a long, a long time to get those 10 filled, but we wanted them on the books. So I just want to make sure that's not over, overflay, overstating that percentage?
I did not know about the additional 10, so I would have to look into that.
It does, because we purposely increased the number of police officers to a higher number, knowing that the term, like, yeah. So I just want to make sure that we pick, put that as a footnote. So it's not like, oh my gosh, we're at 10%. We couldn't maybe, you know?
Similar to where I came from, San Marino, we did the very similar way to do that overfill to get that additional body in. So this number, I will look into it just to make sure and I'll report back to the city council regards to that number. And then an O and M costs are on budget and nothing to report at this time. As I mentioned, on the expenditure side, the four departments that have vacancies are fire, public works, recreation parks and library, and human resources. And that really concludes just the summary of the second quarter, financial status report. And I will move on to the mid-year review and adjustments for the city council. Mid-year is very typical for most businesses or governments in, in doing business where we plan the budget during that January through April, May period. And so we try to plan our best for the next year's budget, but there's just changes that happens as the fiscal year begins. So this is an opportunity to at times clean up the budget, but also correct the budget as well. So I've met with the various department heads regards to their requests. And so I wanted to cover the various recommended revenue budget adjustments for the city council tonight. Overall, for revenues and expenditures, the changes are actually less than 1%. It's close to 0.2% of our overall budget. Revenue adjustment that staff is recommending is $16,980. And on the expenditure adjustment, we're looking at $309,914,000. The net change in our budget on the general fund, we're looking at $117,315. And it should say all non-general fund is $292,934. And let me go into the detail behind these various adjustments to our budget. On our revenue budget, we are looking at $16,980 and that's from the Recreation and Economic Development Trust, our donations trust fund. For the expenditures, we're looking at five different funds. First, the general fund, we're requesting $117,315. The transportation fund or the gas tax fund of $50,000. The development services and trust fund of $19,668. Other special revenues or grant fund, we're asking for $26,400. And the Recreation and Economic Development Trust Fund of $96,531. And I'll just go into the various details with the council on what these adjustments are recommending. On the non-departmental side, we are asking for a $17,315 budget amendment. And this is really for the crossing guard agreement that was established later during the fiscal, the budget process. And so we finalized the, the agreement with all city management. And so that the total contract was $165,000, but we only budgeted $142,000. So we're asking for that budget adjustment for that particular line item.
Let's click clarification, that that number is very, is pretty much flat to last year. Remember, we talked about this in the finance committee?
The finance committee, yes.
So this is, it, the budget, the budget number was. So this is, the budget, the budget number was considered to be lower than last year's. So this is not a true increase? This is just a change in the budget?
Yes, it was a decrease. It's a year-over-year decrease for the cost that was negotiated. This cost is really just truing up what the amendment for the agreement was. Yes. And on the public work side, we're asking for three budget adjustments. On the general fund side, we're asking for a hundred thousand dollar budget adjustment. This is mainly for the aquatic centers, supplies and maintenance. The finance committee that I met last week recommended to break that hundred thousand out to, for additional visibility. So out of the hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars is for the purchase of chemicals as chemicals for the pool has inflated quite a bit from when we budgeted back in April, May. So we're asking for that increase in cost. The twenty-five thousand dollars is for maintenance of filters as the city maintains regular maintenance. But the specialized maintenance that is required for the filters are what's required for the additional funding. And lastly, another twenty-five thousand for the extended warranty for the new heaters that are going to be installed in the coming months. Sorry. The other special revenues...
I just have to add, the price of chemistry has gone up?
Chemicals.
I know, but the chemistry is involved. I mean, this is bleach, right? Bleach and sulfuric acid, like what? Come on, Elias.
Mostly...
I can go make you some bleach, like, come on.
Mostly chlorine. It's really has gone up so much.
How can that possibly be? Can't we just go to a spigot next door? It's hydrogen chloride.
It's not only us. I checked the other, other cities that have aquatic centers, centers, they all, they all have the same...
I mean, are we getting this at West Marine or someplace? It's just, I mean, it's, it's, it's the most commoditized chemical that you could buy.
The, the only thing I would like to add, this is what we want to add. But if it is not spent, it goes back to general fund.
I just, you know, like, you know, you sat through with that transportation meeting where we looked at a three and a half million dollar turn lane. Like, I'm just caught up in the, like, it's a bulk chemistry. All right.
And I think our analysis showed that even in January, spent close to seventy percent of the overall budget for the chemicals. And so Elias and I had to meet regards to just making sure we didn't want to come back to the council and ask for additional money for chemicals. And it's just the inflationary aspect of chlorine, basically.
My comment was maybe we should be looking at saltwater.
Just going to go to Toronto with a bucket and come back with a bunch of...
We're close to the beach. We can get some saltwater.
On the other special revenue or our grant fund, Cal Green Grant was a grant that city received thirty thousand dollars last fiscal year. And part of the expenditure side of twenty-six thousand, four hundred wasn't rolled over to this fiscal year. So we're asking for council to roll that budget over to this fiscal year to finish up this project. And lastly, transportation funds or the gas tax fund, the department is asking for fifty thousand dollars. And really, it's driven by just more demand on the, the engineering inspection that has been asked for, for his department during this period and wasn't really anticipated during the, when the budget was established. The recreation parks and library department is asking for revenue of sixteen thousand, nine eighty and an expenditure of ninety-six thousand, five thirty-one. This is really for the World Series, Little League's World Series celebration that the city council approved back in September fifth, twenty twenty-three. The budget wasn't established at that time, so this is really just a cleanup of the budget. The sixteen thousand, nine eighty was really from sales and merchandise and also some donations from the local businesses as well. On the expenditure side, the finance committee did mention to break that expense out just so that we can understand what that comprises of. And so on the personnel cost, out of that ninety-six thousand, five thirty-one, forty thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars was personnel. And of that personnel cost, forty-one percent of it was PD, twenty-five percent of it was recreation, and the remaining twenty-five percent was from public works. And then the last adjustment that we have is from community development. This is really a budget cleanup of nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars out of the department, development services trust fund. And this is really just a carryover from prior year for the downtown specific plan that we should have carried over from prior fiscal year to this fiscal year. So we're just asking council to, to move this budget over and just to clean up this fund.
And then just real quick, on the transportation funds, I believe, weren't we trying to go after FEMA for some of that money as a replacement?
The, the transportation portion that fifty thousand is really pays for the inspection of the projects, which we already collect as part of when they come to pull a permit. We do collect inspection fees, which goes to another bucket, basically.
So tonight's staff's recommendation, it's detailed out in the staff report, but I will just hit the highlights here. Number one is approve to amend the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget to reflect the revised year-end revenue estimates and year-end expenditures, which were noted in the mid-year budget and second quarter fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four financial report. Number two, approve to reclassify forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars from the designated Smoky Hollow Parking and Lou to the general fund unassigned fund balance. And just to highlight this particular line item, this is really a fund balance cleanup item. During last year in May of twenty twenty-three, the council approved a transfer from the general fund unassigned fund balance of seventy-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars into the designated Smoky Hollow Parking and Lou Fund for the pilot parking project. And, and after that project was finalized, there was forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars remaining. So we want to move that back into the general fund's unassigned fund balance. So it's really a cleanup item. And lastly, number three, approve the all-city management crossing guard services amendment, number thirteen, which will increase the not-to-exceed amount to a total of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, thirty-seven dollars. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Council comments or questions?
No, I just want to thank you and your team for getting this done. I know, you know, you're new on, new to the, to the team, and you've done a great job of making the information clear and concise. And thank you for presenting it this way.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chung. It's, it's nice to hear boring financial reports, that budgets are in line and things are as they're expected to be. So I appreciate your good work.
Great. Thank you.
Further council comments? Do I have consensus to receive and file?
Yes.
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 Councilor Jure, you have question, or comment, question? Very well, we have two alternatives. Does anyone have any of these individual items they would like to discuss further? All right, with that, I can take a motion to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Recreation Economics budget, or excuse me, the twenty-twenty-three budget items two through nine together.
We can do that?
We can. So moved?
Carol, second.
It's item two through nine for a total of seven items.
Drew moves.
They drew pictures, so I can do the math.
All right, we have a motion on the right. We have a second from, from Peristic.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed or abstentions. It passes. We are on to item seven, the establishment of a youth advisory council. Who is Reese reporting this item? Stand by. We were able to take them all for the highlighted instruction options, the choose-your-own-adventure book that is. Yeah, we amended fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budgets.
Eight and nine were approved.
Yes.
Two through seven were amended.
That's right. Items two through seven, the first five, the last two were approved. I would have had it right, but Councilmember Drew's motion was just so convoluted.
All right, you can go. Thank you.
Okay, good evening again. As you recall, probably a couple of months ago, councilmember Drew brought before council the proposal of having a youth advisory council or establishing a youth advisory council. And staff was directed to go off and do some homework and research, look at the various youth advisory councils around the county, and return to city council with a proposed framework and structure to establish a youth advisory council. And I'd like to introduce executive assistant Stephanie Reese to provide a presentation on this item.
Good evening, council. As stated by Barbara, on October seventeenth, Mr. Drew brought forward the wanting for the city to research a youth advisory council for the city of El Segundo. It is, it is in line with our strategic plan compliance. Goal one, to enhance customer service diversity, equity, inclusion and communication. Strategy A, enhance proactive community engagement program to educate and inform the public about city services, programs and issues. This is completely in line with our strategic plan as we already have an established city-school partnership with El Segundo Unified School District and El Segundo High School. With planning Civic Day coming up, this seemed a really good opportunity for us to continue partnership with the civic and government teacher Craig Gast. If you notice up here, this is actually a picture from Civic Day. So through that partnership, we brought forward potential discussion topics to students. So environmental concerns, capital improvement program process, state laws, and with local mandates and citywide organization. We surveyed a hundred and thirteen students with partnership with Mr. Gast's class. We saw actually quite a bit of enthusiastic students that did want to learn more about their local government and kind of offering an opinion on, on where these laws and local mandates will lie with them, especially when it comes to like e-bike safety, for example. Interested in joining the youth advisory council? Just a couple of responses that we would, we received was, I would be interested in participating because it would be a great opportunity to learn leadership skills and learn more about the community. Another student, I'm interested in participating in the youth advisory council because I would like to share my thoughts and opinions from a teenager's perspective about how we can improve our city. The future of our city depends on the younger generation, and being in this council would give teenagers a good learning experience. So we received quite a bit of good feedback. It was actually fifty-fifty. A lot of the students were seniors. So their, their responses were, were more in line with, I'm going to be going to college. It didn't really pertain to me. But they said if they had the opportunity, they would have joined in their freshman year, especially if it was something that they could put on their college application. And then other students who stated that maybe their interest wasn't theirs because they just are really involved with sports. But other than that, everyone else was a fifty percent, yes, they would love to do it. So we received quite a, quite good responses. Qualifications, they must be between the ages of thirteen and the ages of, under nineteen years old, residing with their parents or guardians within the city of El Segundo or be a registered attendee of El Segundo, Vista Mar, Da Vinci High School. We did reach out to Vista Mar and Da Vinci High School, Weisburn. They're still getting back to us with their interest. They did say they would. We're just waiting on that. But El Segundo High School was interested, and Craig's actually very excited to partner with us on that. Part, participants would have written parental consent. That's just in line with what other youth advisory councils are requiring. And then this wouldn't just be for students that are attending these high schools. It would also pertain to any students that may be homeschooled that do live in El Segundo. They would have the opportunity to join as well. The structure, so we would promote and accept applications August through the end of September, kind of in line with when school starts. We recommended eleven members with the one-year term without limits. So if a student's a freshman, they want to continue to join and provide that consistency, we would be completely open and would love for them to return. Meet once per month, and then the first meeting would be in October. The first update to city council would be in early twenty twenty-five. We'd like to actually have a student present to you to see how they feel about the program and what the benefit that they're receiving. Tonight's recommended council action is authorize the establishment of a youth advisory council as an educational program for local high school students and authorize city staff to conduct interviews and select youth advisory council members or other actions, recommendations. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. Can you guys go back to slide seven? All right, I, I think thirteen years old is too young. So the, the, this really needs to be a high school thing. So I think we have to do it, you have to at least be a freshman in, in the school districts in order to qualify for this.
And we can reach out to the school district. I just didn't know if there were any students that could be a potential age of thirteen that are in high school.
Oh, yeah, so you could say fourteen and/or a freshman in high school.
I would say you have to be a freshman in high school.
At least, yeah, we can change that.
Because in the end, one of the things you are trying to do is get, you know, one of the things that was brought up is that, you know, part of this is to, for colleges and to build a resume and things like that. And, and I think it's going to be a lot more important for the juniors and seniors to get on there. I'm not saying that you shouldn't have younger kids on there, but thirteen years old is basically a seventh grader. So I think we just have to move it up a little bit to make it a little bit more distinct. Okay? And then I think, can you go to the next slide? Um, okay, end of August. Okay, so you got one-year term limits. Okay. I did, I really appreciate you reaching out to Craig Gast. It's, it's great and, and getting the input from the schools. That was a big deal. I'm glad you did that. I didn't even ask for that, and I'm really glad you did that. That was a good call.
I felt it was important to include the students. If we're going to make a program for them, I thought that it was important to hear their opinion.
One hundred percent, and well done doing that. Thank you very much.
And if you can imagine, I'm nervous being up here right now, but...
You're doing great.
Speaking in front of the high school students was a whole other level.
They're a lot more honest.
The reviews and the, the survey results really spoke to that. But just their, their candidness was actually very helpful. So they, they really do have a true interest in this. And actually, just even the topics that they may even bring up that they join would be great.
Well done. Thank you for putting that together.
So I just have one comment. I would change, I'm not sure if I would do eleven months. I would do a September through May timeframe because that's the timeframe of the school, and a lot of kids go on vacation. So, and then I would have your timing of, to promote it in the, like, so coming up May, June, to start in September.
Yeah.
Because that way you can have, because the kids are not, they're not engaged during the other time. So I'd change those, that timeframe. So it wouldn't be eleven months. It would be September through May.
Yeah.
And then the, as far as the topics of discussion, who's going to drive that?
We, we have the potential discussions of topic. Just to start, the environmental concerns, the capital improvement program process, and the state laws and local mandates and citywide organization. That's, that will be to start. But we kind of want them to also go through the motions if they were their own, like, committee. Right now, it's a program because we really want to see the interest from the students and see how many, you know, actually do want to join. And then kind of take their hand and support them so that they can, you know, get the best benefit from the city as far as what their interests are. So the first meeting, they would elect a chair and a vice chair. And then we would give them these potential topics to discuss, but we would like it to be student-led in the beginning.
And then the other thing, is similar to how we've asked for all of the C B Bs to come once a quarter to present, which we need to make sure is on the calendar. They, if we're going to go through, if we're going to do September through May in our, like, June, first of June meeting, we should have a presentation from the team to do a presentation on what they learned, what they, just so we're getting, people are getting recognized and we can thank them for their time and we can hear from them directly.
So we would have them come in early twenty twenty-five, just starting off for this year, and then you'd like them to come back.
Yeah, so I think you should start your program. You should be soliciting May through June or April through, April through June. Go through the process, start September, end in May, present in June.
Any other questions?
So how is this staffed? Is like an individual employee from the city and someone from the school? Is like, individual employee from the city and someone from the school district at these meetings to kind of help drive the bus, or?
We discussed, so it's going to lie in the city manager's office. Right now, we believe we have enough staff to support that right now, but as far as the interview process, we discussed that potentially having a school district employee also serve on the interview panel, just so that they have their perspective and we're including them.
But the meeting's going to be run by city staff?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to be in a program and not, it'll look like a CCB as far as a student's getting the experience. During the first meeting, I'm going to, if I were to help run it with Barbara or any other staff, my recommendation was that they attend a city council meeting, another CCB or commission meeting, just so that they get involved and they can report back at the second meeting. And they'll, you know, they'll leave, leave it up to them as far as like what their interests are. I think that this could actually be a lot of different things. They could do community service. It could be more than just one single meeting a month. So because it's a program, then it's still open to the school district if they want to attend, or other departments if they want to attend and also make presentations if the students are interested in a particular topic that relates to their department.
Great. Thanks.
Anything further? All right, do I have a motion to authorize the establishment of a youth advisory councils and educational program for local high school students?
So moved.
Perstik moves.
Drew's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to authorize city staff to conduct interviews and select the youth advisory council members?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, do I have a motion to approve the proposed implementation recommendations?
So moved. With as amended.
As amended. God, you started off so well tonight. Wheels are coming off the wagon. All in favor?
Aye.
I think you're doing a great job.
So does my mom. All right, uh, any committees, commissions, and boards represented there? Not. City clerk, any reports?
Nope, just a quick reminder that the voicemail ballot box is now open for anybody who's received their ballots and would like to drop them off.
Very well. City treasurer, Noah Staki. Councilmember reports. Councilmember Valdino.
Um, yeah, I just want to let folks know that there will be a Blue Butterfly Environmental Planning this Friday. It's going to happen between 10 and 2 o'clock at West Imperial between Loma Vista and Hillcrest. And we're going to have volunteers from our El Segundo Blue Butterfly Conservancy, South Bay Parkland Conservancy, and Chevron, which is donating 250 native plants to create a new Blue Butterfly environment. So I invite the community to come, check it out, and pitch in. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Valdino. Councilmember Drew.
I just want to wish good luck to our high school boys' basketball team. They are in the CIF finals on Friday night, or actually Friday afternoon. Really weird start time, 4 o'clock in the afternoon at Azusa Pacific University, but potentially another championship for this city, and wish them luck. That's all.
Councilmember Perstik.
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that if you see any potholes or issues of muzzlesides in our town, please use the report it button. We are monitoring very closely. I know that I hear, I see on social media a lot of people complaining about potholes in other cities, but not ours, which I'm very thankful for. So thank you to the Public Works team, and thank you for the Public Works for all their efforts during these storms. And I do want to make sure that we bring as an agenda item soon, the new pumps, or pumps on Eucalyptus. I know we've, we've had like a little water flow of pump, of piping going up, and I, I know we had talked about it, and I know I brought this up, and I didn't mean to jinx it, but I think I did, did jinx it when I said we need to save that money for those pumps. And I know that Elias, the director of Public Works, is working to try to get that cape covered by FEMA, but I do think it needs to be a discussion, so can you please put it on the next agenda? And then I'd like also put on the next agenda to talk about code enforcement. I know we brought it up many times, but we need to really get to the bottom of this issue. We have it down Main Street, we have Richmond, now on the other, on the east side of town. But we need to solve the problem of code enforcement as far as parking, and we need to either determine what that looks like, and I just want to make sure we have a conversation on it, so please put it on the agenda. And then please put on the agenda to talk about outdoor dining and separate it from the downtown specific plan. We need to have that conversation before we do the downtown specific plan, so we have a, a clear conversation direction so that the staff can design the specific plan, so it does, the downtown specific plan doesn't get all consumed for outdoor dining. So those are three items I'd like to place on the next agendas in the near future. That's it.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Perstik. I think that there's probably room for a, an educational item for us from the staff about, you know, sometimes we, we use code enforcement or parking person or police or fire for, for different things, to let us know who does which thing, like who calls J and Jaxx, is that, is that code? Or is that, you know, does that, do they have a specific development agreement they're violating or some, I'm not, I'm not saying that they are, but I'll use, use that as an example. But I think it would benefit us so that we know who to direct residents, that if it's a parking issue, that's something that's done by our police support, or something like that. So that might be worth it in our, in our one-on-ones to give us perhaps an individual, just a quick class on delineation of labor. Thank you for calling out the pothole piece. That is a, a crowning achievement for us in the rain. Elias and I, as I pointed out earlier, were in a meeting for regional transportation that highlighted something that is important for all of us. All of us contribute money via our sales tax and into various measures that in our sub-regional funding are used for transportation projects, some of which you see right here on El Segundo Boulevard. We highlighted some particular attention to items that just live, as I sort of alluded earlier, in the important but not urgent file of a region. And some of them are incredibly high-ticket items. So we may, you may hear things come up in agendas coming up in the future that look at revisiting specific infrastructure, things that we've asked for money to be allocated to, that have just sort of lingered. I mean, our place lingers because it's so big, I mean, it, it looms large because it's so big, but some of them are, you know, turn lanes and things that are tying up money that, that, that all of us pay in our sales tax and are tied for projects that just seem to go on forever. And by me go on, it's like, no one's broken ground, they're just trying to figure out how to procure land for a turn lane or something. I mean, some of these, like the three and a half million dollar turn lane, I mean, that was unbelievable. Right? I looked at the three and a half million dollars for a turn lane, like, what does it do? Is it a hot tub? Like, it's crazy, right? Is there like a cheetah Lamborghini? So those items are out there, we will be revisiting, we've got sanitation tomorrow, I'm sure that'll have a ton of great highlights for you. But the transportation piece does involve, and I also just be careful of the tyranny of large numbers in it, because when these things come up for us to discuss, you know, oh, it went from 3.8 to 3.9 million dollars, until you think it was like, that's $200,000. So I don't want to shy away from those, and I will apologize in advance if we belabor them. And the last piece, I want to call attention to the hackathon that took place over the weekend, just because it was enormous. I mean, it was absolutely enormous, that they packed in on the 100 block of Eucalyptus and, and thank you to, to the fire department on the fire marshal side, and Michael on the development service for, for making that sort of happen for them. But that was a big Department of Defense initiative, right? There's 150 hackers in there working on three specific Ukrainian problem sets. It was successful, and the Ukrainian Ministry of Defense piped in by video screen at the end. It was incredible. I mean, there's probably two, you know, 200 VC investors sitting there. We had one, one founder get $6 million of funding to start their company in El Segundo at the scene. It was absolutely incredible display. It went on from 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM. There are a lot of really bright minds up and down Franklin doing impossibly, impossibly young. I mean, there were two young ladies who built a ground UAV overnight, a robot, a two-legged robot overnight, these two ladies from UCLA. It was absolutely incredible. So we may have another one coming up at the end of March. It was a, a super successful piece, full of an enormous amount of ambitious brainpower. It was really compelling to see. It would, you would imagine it was probably what it was like here when they first created the refinery. But that is all for me. City attorney?
I did, I do want to add one thing. Tomorrow is the last day to submit your application for the grant for the earthquake retrofit. So I just want to remind everybody that El Segundo is now part of that program, so please make sure you submit your retrofit application.
I'm glad you said that, because I forgot one last piece, and I know one's really watching to talk about voting, but there are, it's not just primary season. I mean, the, the primary for the DA is a big vote for all of us. I mean, I think that we all have various opinions about how, how prosecutorial authority is used, so that is on the March 4th ballot, and also the senatorial special election is decided then. And your supervisor? All right, over to you, city attorney.
Nothing, city mayor. Thank you.
City manager.
Yes, I do, Mayor Protem, I have a couple items, but on the hackathon, I did attend on Saturday, and what I found interesting too was when they asked the question of how many people came from diff, actually flew in, I would say 60, at least 60, 65% of those folks flew, kids flew in from other states, you know, obviously using our hotels.
The car full of robotic equipment, and then 3D printed a drone right there. It was unbelievable.
Yeah, it was amazing. So, you know, using our restaurants and hotels, that was, that was pretty exciting too. But of course, I do have a few comments on Hyperion, so if you can indulge me for a few minutes. We obviously received numerous complaints of odors over the past couple of weeks, or particularly the last week. Some of it had to do with the rainfall, and I'll, I'll share a little bit about that and the storms, but other things happened that, that we feel caused the odors, but I, you know, one of the things that, that I wanted to just remind really the community is that, you know, whenever things happen there that cause odors, we, do we as staff do our best to find out how those, you know, what's causing those odors and what can be done to fix the problem? So, you know, since it's not in our city, it's governed by the city of Los Angeles and the sanitation district, sometimes we're only as good as the information we get from them. So we try our best in terms of going to the upper management staff. I, I have direct contact with Barbara Romero, who's the, the general manager. You know, Elias speaks directly with the chief engineer over there. So we try and get that information as quickly as possible and disseminate it through our social media network. So I want to assure the community and the council that we are doing our best to gather that information and, and disseminate that to the community. Sometimes like this, this past time, we, we did not get the information in a timely manner, had to call Mayor Bass's office, heard Public Works person who was very helpful in, in getting me the information. So sometimes we've got to go different paths to, to get that information, but we are trying our best there. I did mention at the last meeting, the increased flow into Hyperion due to the rains on February 4th and 5th. As a result of that rainfall, some of the process equipment at Hyperion was damaged. And this was information we, we finally did get, which led to, to biogas flaring and temporary use of tanks in primary Battery D. And those are the only tanks whose covers have not yet been replaced, of course. So Hyperion has reported that they stopped using these tanks on February 7th. And then in order to repair the damaged equipment from the rainfall, Hyperion conducted cleaning and working activities at different locations throughout the plant, which again produced odors. And then finally, they had extensive electrical damage to one of the buildings and were forced to store more solids than usual in their truck loading facilities. And these trucks, as you can imagine, are open, in an open building, and caused a very stinky situation. So fixing, they supposedly fixed the problem, and we'll see, but, you know, they, so again, the storm caused a multitude of, of damage to the facility, which they feel directly related to the
Carol, I just want to make sure. Heard you right. They're claiming that, that state-of-the-art facility, state-of-the-art facility was damaged by rainfall.
$90 million in capital
Not like a catastrophic snowstorm. It's not a hurricane, it's not an earthquake.
Yeah.
It's rain.
Yes.
It's only job is to handle liquid.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's unfathomable.
It's, sometimes it is. I mean, state-of-the-art, I don't know. I mean, this is an old facility that, you know, every, every month, it's something different.
Yeah, we might be confusing the term state of the art with being new. The art, the state of the art could be a bad state.
Right.
Vintage.
And they did, and they did flush out quite a bit of sewage
Yes.
One mile out.
Right.
And we were on them to make sure that the, the county notified the residents, because I know they were a little slow on the uptake on that.
The, about two years ago, when they were doing the hearings at AQMD, it was very clear that, you know, it was a state-of-the-art facility about 20 years ago, that they completely failed to maintain it and replace critical equipment in a timely manner. They admitted that. I mean, they are, we were way behind schedule. They didn't offer any good reason for it. So I, you know, I, it is, the type of plant it is, is state-of-the-art for what's out there in treatment, but it's been really poorly maintained, which they admitted. That doesn't help the situation, but I think that they're playing catch-up, and it, it's really pretty embarrassing that what they let happen to that plant.
Yep.
And one of the things that, that really came up, and I always want to reiterate, was they didn't change the plant to accommodate the change in the low flow. So when policy, the state of California instituted low flow mandates, that trick, it didn't trickle down to the plant to change their practices or change their equipment to accommodate that low flow. So the, 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 the waste became more concentrated, and that's, they didn't change their plant to accommodate that change in concentration.
Right. Final item, speaking of AQMD, they did receive over 90 odor complaints in the past week, causing them to issue three notice of violations on February 13th, 15th, and 16th. So they are currently investigating the cause of those odors, which I shared with you just now, and we'll see what AQMD ultimately comes up with is the cause for the odors, and I'll pass those along, and we'll put that on our website.
I mean, is excessive sunshine going to be the next problem during the summer? That something was damaged because there's too much sun? I mean, this is literally the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. There's sand. Sand is getting in things.
That concludes my, my comments. Mayor Protem.
I think it's everything. I'm like, oh. All right, on that cherry note, we are adjourned.